Okay. Going to call and order the Washoe County Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, August 4th, 2020. I have an introductory statement that I'd like to read. Any participants wishing to speak via Zooms shall sign in and identify themselves with their first and last names when they're called upon. If you're not a panelist and you wish to speak, please only click the raise your hand prompt symbol during the public comment portion of the item you wish to speak on. All panelists on Zoom should mute their mics until they're ready to speak. If anyone is having difficulty hearing the audio through Zoom, it may be helpful to use earbuds. In order to be able to see chambers and presentations, please ensure that you open an additional tab to Stream Washoe County TV Live or YouTube. Please be aware that if you use YouTube, there will be a delay versus the actual chamber proceedings. So, that being said, do we have a determination of the quorum?
Larry Chesney.
Present.
Francine Doncic.
Present.
Thomas Bruce. Sarah Savilecik. Katie Nelson.
Here.
Larry Payton.
I am promoting him to panelist right now.
Okay. Larry Payton. Pat Phillips.
Here.
Larry Payton's here, he's just kind of, the connection was lost, so we have a quorum.
Okay, good enough. Commissioner Bruce, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I would be delighted. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Bruce. Legal Counsel Edwards, do you want to tell us about the ethics law announcement?
Sure do.
You're the guy.
Planning Commission members are reminded that, as a respect to any matter or any person coming before the Planning Commission tonight, one, you receive a gift or a loan; two, you have a pecuniary interest; three, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship; or four, you provided representation or counseling before an agency or a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter being considered tonight, then you must disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. Additionally, you must abstain from deliberation or voting on a matter if it is also clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commission members are also reminded that, under the Planning Commission rules, if you have had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the Commission today, you should disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mr. Lloyd, would you like to inform us of the appeal procedure?
Of course.
Please.
All right, most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and you want to appeal its action, you may do so in writing within ten calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is signed by the Planning Commission Chair and/or the Secretary of the Planning Commission, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
Thank you. That being done, let's move on to Item 5, General Public Comment. Is there any general public comment?
Yes, there is. I have two emails that I would like to read. The first one is from Jackpot Equine. Dear Planners, we were unable to attend the Zoom workshop on 7/22/2020. However, my family wishes to express our concerns regarding the proposed amendments. Your choices and approvals determine the future of our home and region. You are quite honestly caving into big developer money and allowing open space to be gobbled up and, quite frankly, ruining our environment vistas and open spaces with overdevelopment, creating more pollution, more traffic, and lack of water resources should tell you all you need to know. Verdi, South Reno, off Curdy, Veterans Toll Road developments are hideous and forever gone. Sorry, there are no wildlife easements or crossings and barely open space in all these clustered homes, unsustainable and destroying the ecosystems. Think globally but not locally. Build up, not out, and create the green open space. Thanks for your time. The next one is from Pam Roberts. And she says, "My name is Pam Roberts and I reside within the Warm Springs area of unincorporated Washoe County. I believe agenda items 9C, 9D, 9E, and 9F cannot be heard or acted upon. The agenda for Planning Commission as NRS 278.210 subsection 2 provides that before a public hearing can be held pursuant to subsection 1 of NRS 278.210, the applicant in this instance, Washoe County, must hold a neighborhood meeting to provide an explanation of the proposed amendments. Furthermore, the notice must be sent by mail at least ten days before the neighborhood meeting and include the date, time, place, and purpose of the neighborhood meeting. The statute does not create an exception that states that the applicant does not need to hold a neighborhood meeting if it involves all the neighborhoods. It is my understanding that there was a public workshop held on July 22nd. However, as a property owner located within the area to which the proposed amendments pertain, I received no notice regarding the public workshop held on July 22nd. I did learn from our area CAB chairwoman that she received an email notice of the public workshop on July 21st. I raised my concerns about the lack of notice via email to Eric Brown, our county manager, last week, and he directed Trevor Lloyd to address my concerns. While Mr. Lloyd has been responsive to my questions about the land use and transportation element, if I had been noticed about the public workshop, I would have had the opportunity to read through all the relevant documents and had a meaningful discussion on July 22nd. However, I was not properly noticed and did not have the benefit of the applicant county explaining the proposed amendments. Mr. Lloyd pointed to Washoe County Code 110.80.20 to justify the applicant county failure to properly notice the public workshop held on July 22nd, which would have served as the neighborhood meeting required pursuant to NRS 278.210 subsection 2. However, Washoe County Code cannot create an exemption to a state law. Since the county did not comply with the note requirements of NRS 278.210 subsection 2, agenda items 2C, 2D, 2E, and 2F should not be action items." Okay. And then we have one more. It is a voicemail from Susan Ambrose. And... Sorry about that.
The upcoming master plan amendments that are being heard tonight in this meeting, we were told... Susan Ambrose, Chair of the Warm Springs CAB regarding item number five. I have concerns regarding the workshop meeting that was held on July 22nd to discuss the upcoming master plan amendments that are being heard tonight in this meeting. We were told after the workshop, when we questioned planning staff about the short notice received, that this meeting was not an all CAB meeting as the amendments were not site-specific to any one location. Additionally, staff said the notice RE, the workshop, was a courtesy to all of the CAB chairs and was sent out three days prior to the meeting. Myself and other chairs received an email from the CAB secretary at 3:42 PM on July 21st. That was 24 hours before the meeting and not enough time to really prepare ahead of time for the workshop or adjust our schedules. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the public comment I have.
Okay. That was who just spoke. Okay. Any other general public comment?
I have no Zoom.
Okay. Moving along. We'll move on to item number six, possible action to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Okay. Motion by Commissioner Doncic, second by Commissioner Bruce. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
We don't need to do a roll call vote on this, do we, Nate?
I think is... I would have yes, because it got a little bit muddled there, so yes.
Okay. So, go through the list. Commissioner Doncic.
Approve.
Commissioner Bruce. Commissioner Savilecik. Commissioner Nelson.
I approve.
Commissioner Payton.
Approve.
Commissioner Phillips.
Approve.
Commissioner Chesney approves, it's unanimous. The agenda is approved. Action to, item number seven, action to approve June 2nd, 2020 draft minutes.
Commissioner Doncic, sorry.
Commissioner Savilecik.
I move to approve the minutes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Commissioner Doncic, I move to second the approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous, okay. Now, we'll move on to Item B, planning items. Possible action to approve a resolution of appreciation of service for James Barnes and to authorize the Chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Planning Commission. Secretary Lloyd, would you do us the honor of reading the citation, please?
I would be honored to. First of all, can we confirm that Mr. Barnes is on the line?
Jimmy, you on there?
Outstanding. Thank you.
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Okay, by the way.
Well, this is a resolution of the Washoe County Planning Commission expressing appreciation to James Barnes for his service to Washoe County. Whereas Commissioner Barnes has since his appointment by the Washoe County Commission on February 28th, 2012, been an active and interested member of Washoe County Planning Commission, serving the county with dedication and distinction. Whereas Commissioner Barnes was reappointed by the Washoe County Commissioners to his first full term on the Washoe County Planning Commission on May 15th, 2012, and a second full term on April 26th, 2016. Whereas Commissioner Barnes demonstrated professionalism and always treated staff, applicants, and the public with dignity and respect. Whereas Commissioner Barnes volunteered his time and talents to serve on the Regional Planning Commission and was an integral part of the successful adoption of the 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. Whereas Commissioner Barnes was always reliable, polite, courteous, and appreciative of staff and his fellow commissioners. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Washoe County Planning Commission does hereby express their deep appreciation to James for his extraordinary concern and devotion to the improvement of the community's well-being through the development, implementation, and administration of quality planning in Washoe County, and be it further resolved that the Washoe County Planning Commission will miss the contributions of James Barnes and extend their best wishes for a happy and prosperous future.
Thank you.
This adopted August 4th, 2020.
Thank you, Trevor. Do any of the Commissioners or staff have any comments they'd like to relay to Jim? I do.
I do.
Who's first?
You start it.
Jim, I want to thank you for all your years of service and your mentoring and your ability to counsel when we needed it, and I really appreciate all the effort and time that you put into your volunteerism for the county, and you'll be sorely missed. That's...
Jim, this is...
Commissioner Savilecik.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnes, I just want to extend my appreciation to you for all of your support and all of your mentorship and everything you did to make sure that all of us as Commissioners were committed to what we were doing, and you set... You were such a wonderful role model for that, and I am forever indebted to you. Thank you.
Jim, hi, this is Francine. There's not much left unsaid, but I want, again, want to say thank you for mentoring me, keeping us all in a straight line, and helping us keep that high standard that we have here in getting us there. Thank you.
Mr. Bruce.
Jim, this is Tom Bruce. I wanted to thank you for being there and kind of showing me how to act, even though, even when I don't act that way. I appreciate it. I think you've been a great boon to the county, and I do wish you the very best, and if you give me a call, we can go for a ride in my Miata. Bye.
Trevor?
All right, it's hard to believe it's been eight years. It seems like just yesterday it was his first day on, serving on the Commission. I've had the pleasure of working with James in several capacities. We were colleagues as he served as Deputy DA for the Planning Commission for quite a few years. I worked with him in that role, and then eight years on the Planning Commission, and I think I can give him the best compliment, and that is he's the consummate gentleman. Always had the highest level of integrity, honesty, and just a diligent steward of Washoe County, and I will miss your friendship more than anything, Jim. Thank you.
Anybody else? Jim, is there anything you'd like to say?
Mr. Chair, it's Nate Edwards. Can I speak?
Absolutely.
Before Mr. Barnes does, but I'd like to say something.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you, Jim. It's been a pleasure working with you in this capacity, and I know you have a background. You used to be in my role of what I'm doing right now, and I think you were able to take that into account, and I think it helped you, and you did a great job. Both as Chair and as a regular member of the Planning Commission, and I think these are really big shoes to fill. And I think we've got some good people on board, and it's a good thing because there's important decisions that get made by this Commission. And we've, you know, having lost two really experienced Planning Commissioners back-to-back with Commissioner Haran and you, I think you both leave some big shoes to fill, and I'm excited for the future. I think we'll see some good work by the Planning Commission ahead as well, and I want to wish you the best of luck, but it has been a pleasure working with you, and I think you've done a great job, so thank you.
Anybody else? Jim?
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate all the kind words, and I have to say, having been with the Planning Commission going back all the way to the 1990s, I really think we have the best Planning Commission that I've seen in the last 25 years or so, so I want to say that quite honestly. And I just want to recognize the great work that the Planning Commission has done, the staff, Roger, Kelly, Chad, Chris, John, Dan, Eric, and especially Trevor. I think Trevor's done a fantastic job, and I do want to single out Nate because he has a very difficult job. I held his job for many years, and he makes it look somewhat easy, but it's not. It's really a hard, very hard job, and I... He's one of the best... I've been on a lot of state and county boards, and he's one of the best board attorneys that I think I've ever worked with. So, rather than just go on and on, once again, I want to thank everybody. I hope we can keep in touch. I will take Commissioner Bruce up on his offer to ride in his Miata, and I hope we can work together in the future, so thank you.
You're a brave man, Jim. Commissioner Phillips.
I just wanted to say to Commissioner Barnes that from everything that I've been hearing tonight, I think I have big shoes to have to fill.
I'm sure you'll do it quite well.
Okay, Jim, thank you so much. We will stay in touch.
Thank you.
Huh? Do we need a motion? Do we need a motion on this? We don't need a motion on a resolution, do we?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you do, and I also, I believe, you need to take public comment if there is any on this one.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, Commissioner Doncic moves to approve. Commissioner Bruce, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any... None in favor? Passed unanimously. Thank you all, and thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Item 9, public hearings. 9A is tentative subdivision map case number WTM 20-001, Ladera Ranch. Secretary Lloyd, could you give us a brief on this?
Will do. For possible action, hearing, and discussion to approve a tentative map for a 294-lot common open space residential subdivision that will serve as phases 2 through 6 of the existing Ladera Ranch subdivision, which was originally approved for 356 residential dwelling units under case number TM 05011 in 2005. The final map for Phase 1, which is separate from this proposal, was recorded on June 8, 2007. This proposed subdivision also includes major grading in the following amounts: 384,740 cubic yards of grading with up to 36,980 cubic yards of import. It also allows reductions in lot sizes and building setbacks. The maximum number of dwelling units allowable on the property, the subject of this proposal is 301. Approximately 225.7 acres of the site is planned to be designated as common open space within the subdivision. The proposed setbacks are 20 feet to garage, or garage, 10 feet to the building, and 13 and zero side yard setbacks, and 10-foot rear yard setbacks. Lots will range from a minimum of 3,120 square feet to a maximum lot size of 12,096 square feet. The second part of this request is a variance. It's variance case number WPV AR 200002 for possible action, hearing, and discussion to approve a variance to allow finished grades to exceed more than 10 feet in height difference up to a maximum of 40 feet from existing garage. So, representing Washoe County is Staff Planner Dan Klon. Dan, are you on the line to present? Or Chris? I'm not sure.
We're waiting for that response. Do we have any disclosures by Commissioners, either ethics or ex parte communications on this proposal? Seeing none. Dan?
Oh, I'm sorry. Boy, I have really apologized. This is not Dan Klon's case, this is Chris', and I didn't mean to scare you, Dan, if you're listening. Chris Bronzick.
Come on, Dan, speak up.
Chris Bronzick, Washoe County Planning. I am the staff planner for this case. Good evening. We're looking at tentative subdivision map case WTM 20-1 and variance case number WPV AR 20-2. These are both in relation to Ladera Ranch, Phase 2 through 6. Before you is a vicinity map. As you can see, this is a pretty large parcel. However, it does lead to 7th Street, which heads into Golden Valley and Sun Valley. The existing parcels that you see are part of Phase 1 of Ladera... The existing parcels that you see are part of phase one of Ladera Ranch. So the request is for a 294-lot, single-family residential, common open space tentative subdivision map. Lots are ranging in size from 3,120 square feet to 12,096 square feet. Additionally, the request is also to vary, a request of a variance to allow for a maximum cut and fill heights greater than 10 feet in height. So I've provided a site plan before you. Dream Catcher Drive is the primary access. Dream Catcher Drive leads directly to Seventh Street. Opal Point Drive is an additional access point and can also be utilized as emergency access as a second point. So the proposed subdivision is located primarily on developable or lesser slopes. With the current configuration, most of the slopes, 30% or greater, are proposed to be in open space areas. The red on the image before you is of slopes greater than 30%. So what is a common open space development? That's a term we always throw around when we get these large subdivisions, so I thought I'd break it down a little bit more clearly. So the intent of Article 408 is to set forth regulations to permit a variation to lot size, which is what the applicant is requesting, as well as a density transfer within subdivisions. Again, another thing that they are requesting. However, there are five requirements that must be met, and all must be met. So those requirements are preserve open space, protect natural and scenic resources, achieve a more efficient use of land, minimize road building, and to encourage a sense of community. As the project has been submitted before staff, staff believes that they meet all the criteria to be determined as a common open space development. Additionally, I've provided two charts. These charts are found within the staff report, but I think it provides a pretty clear breakdown. So this site has multiple zones, regulatory zones. They have open space, high-density rural, low-density suburban, and medium-density suburb. Of the 266 total acreage of this site, the allowable density or dwellings, dwelling units allowed on the site are 301. Additionally, below is another chart to give a site breakdown. So roughly 85% or 225 acres is deemed common open space, with only 15% or 40, roughly 40 acres being developable area. In addition to the variance request and being common open space development, the applicant is also proposing to vary setbacks. So in this chart, I have provided the standard setbacks for low-density suburban, which are 30 feet in the front and rear, 12 foot on the sides, and the standard setbacks for medium-density suburban, which are 20 feet in the front and rear, and 8 feet sides. The reason I added those standard setbacks is because the bulk of this property and the density allowed are from these two regulatory zones. The applicant is proposing for the front setbacks to be 20 feet to the garage and 10 foot to the building, a 13-foot one-side setback and a zero-line setback, and then a 10-foot rear setback. Staff is in agreement with these proposed setbacks. So as mentioned with the common open space, one of the elements is to encourage a sense of community. The applicant has provided trails as an amenity within the central portion of this development. I provided a red box around one of the primary trails. However, there are significant number of trails throughout this development. So as you can see here, there's multiple trail access. I hope this comes through clearly, but there are dash lines of multiple colors. So we have green, yellow, pink, and orange. Those are proposed trails and to-be-maintained trails. The turquoise or light blue that you see on the eastern portion, or the right side of the image, and then the northwest or northwest, left side of this picture are trails that exist, but they aren't any sort of formal trail heads. They are just trails that people may have made during outdoor recreation on the site. So this proposed subdivision is located within the Sun Valley General Improvement District. One thing to note about the water capacity and sewer capacity is associated with SEBIT is that all developments are subject to a water and sewer capacity study. So these studies are completed prior to the issuance of an intent to serve, which are provided at the tentative map stage, and the will serve is provided at final map. Additionally, we did reach out to the Washto County School District. Washto County School District staff provided us with anticipated students of each grade level, so 62 elementary school, 30 middle school, and 28 high school students are anticipated. One thing to note, and I wanted to touch up on this, is as the current, as the development currently stands, they are zoned for Alice Smith Elementary School, O'Brien Middle School, and North Valleys High School. Washto County staff was clear that in the fall, they will be recommending to their zoning advisory committee that this development be rezoned for all students to go to Bennett Elementary School, Desert Skies Middle School, and New Hug High. So with this subdivision is a significant amount of grading. We have what is anticipated to be 384,740 cubic yards of grading proposed. However, it is good to keep in mind that this grading is in line with similar developments of this size, as well as phase one of Ladera Ranch. Additionally, a variance is being requested to modify Section 110-438-45C. The applicant is requesting the variance to allow for a maximum cut height of 30 feet and a maximum fill height of 40 feet. So there's a couple benefits associated with this variance request. One is allowing the varying height is going to reduce the required amount of cut and scarring of the overall site. Additionally, the land utilized for this proposed development with this variance request results in significantly less cut and fill and less land utilized. Additionally, it should be noted that with this variance request, it's also taking into account sensitive species on the site. There is buckwheat that is located on the site that is listed within the Nevada Handbook of Sensitive Species. I know that's not the full name, but it is a sensitive species. So the applicant will still need to meet all requirements of Section 110-438-45C-1, which requires step-back structural containment in the form of retaining walls, that the retaining walls have a maximum height of 10 feet, that terraces must include landscaping and be a minimum of six feet wide, and the minimum bench widths being four feet wide. Before you is a image of a cut and fill map. So this one, this image gives a pretty good understanding of what exactly is happening. So the dark red blotches or circles that you see on this map indicate cut of 30 feet maximum. And the blue, the large blue in the center is of cuts or fills of 40 feet maximum. So part of this variance, I chose to do a close-up image of part of the site plans and plans that were submitted as part of the application. And as you can see in the center area, you have a retaining wall that is being shown. You have the applicant meeting the three-to-one requirements as set forth within 438, but then you also see the benches that are being proposed, and those benches are eight feet, which are significantly larger than what is required. Additionally, to provide a better understanding of the grading that is being proposed, I've provided cross-sections. So there's three total cross-sections, and for the dark gray that you see on the left, that is for fill, and for the shaded hatching, that is for cut. So it's a significant amount of cut and fill that is taking place within this section. Additionally, Section BB, they have, again, a significant amount of cut taking place. And lastly, another section that shows a significant amount of fill. So this application was to meet with the Sun Valley Citizen Advisory Board. However, there was no regularly scheduled cab meeting during the initial review cycle. The applicant voluntarily delayed their application from going to the June Planning Commission meeting to go instead to the July Planning Commission meeting. They were heard at the regularly scheduled June 15 Sun Valley cab meeting. However, unfortunately, that Sun Valley cab did not have a forum. During that initial review cycle, cab worksheets were sent out to the members, and one cab worksheet was returned. That cab sheet recommended denial for both the variance and the tentative map. Public notice was sent to 305 affected property owners. As of today, I have not received any public comment from potentially any of the noticed properties. I have provided a slide with the tentative map findings. You can find this, these findings with staff comment on pages 16 through 18 in the staff report. Additionally, I've provided a slide with variance findings. You can find these with staff comment on page 18 and 19. One thing about the variance findings that I want to bring into your attention is the special circumstances. This lot is exceptionally, exceptional due to the topography of the site. It is steep. Additionally, there are sensitive species that are on the property. Recommendation, so staff is recommending approval with conditions for the tentative map and approval with conditions for the variance. I've provided a possible motion for the TM, the tentative map, up on your screen, and additionally, a possible motion for the proposed variance. With that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions for, for the staff's presentation right at this time? Okay, is there a applicant presentation? I take it, no?
Hello, my name is Robert Jellon. I'm a summer engineer, the civil engineer. I just got a text from John Crumfoddy, the planner, who was about to make a presentation, but he lost his audio, so he's working on it and is asking for a little bit of time. This is Will Roberts, Lansing Companies, who's the partner and landowner of the project. I'm just sharing that I'm waiting for John to come on. So what we learned in selling the phase one to D.R. Horton based on-
As I've lost my audio on both phones. I guess, can the commissioner hear me? Can the commissioners hear me, John Crumfoddy?
Yes, they can hear you, John.
Yeah, John, we can hear you.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
So anyway, I'll just kind of finish up, and then I'll let John, John do his presentation. Oh, there you are. John, you want to chat, and I'll just chime out, or?
Yeah, well, what I was gonna do is, I just missed, you know, technology is one of the great wonders of the world. I've been working on this all day, and I just got a note on my laptop that says, "Low system resources." I've never seen this before. We've been working on this project for a year. Low system resources may affect your audio. So I lost so much of Chris's presentation. I saw the PowerPoint part of it. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
You can hear me. The commissioners, great, thank you. Mr. Chairman and commissioners, John Crumfoddy on behalf of the applicant. Did Will lead into some presentation? I missed yours as well.
Yeah, I started, John, but why don't you go ahead and start, and then I can come in behind you.
Okay, well, let me go through the PowerPoint, and then we will take it from there. We also have with us this evening our civil engineer, Robert Jellu, and then Paul Slaygi. You can see his name on the panel, the screens of everybody, I noted as well. So can you? Okay, I think that gets us to a spot where everybody can, we all see that? Thank you for, thank you for bearing with us. So the team, as I mentioned, a couple of people, developers, Lansing Companies, Will Roberts, who you just met, civil engineers, Robert Jellu is the lead. He has done, in my opinion, a fabulous job on the grading of this, and what I mean by that is the variance actually creates a better product than it would be with meeting the code, as the code states the standards, and he is almost entirely responsible for that himself. So also, if you look at it relative to the prior version of Ladera Ranch, you would note that we're a couple hundred thousand yards less grading with basically the same concept. So it's the art form of grading, quite honestly. The traffic engineer, Paul Slaygi, is on the line. Everybody knows Paul, and then I'm leading the land use and the community planning effort here. There is our, just to give you some context of the site and relationships and surroundings, you know, there has been a prior project approval on this. We've done a complete redo. You can see there's the 105 lots that are approved in phase one. I think about half of those have been constructed with homes. The land development has been completed. You can sort of see the different colors, commissioners, and then the balance of our 294 lots in a different shade of black it gives you. And of course, you know, there's obviously a lot of topography that we're dealing with here, the south end of the site. I want, if you look at it, almost half of the site is completely left in its natural state, with the exception of some red trail connections, which is an obvious opportunity for public benefit here. There's the mixed bag of zoning. Again, you can see the 105 lots to the north in the MDS, and then the sum of the zoning designations represented by LDS, HDR, open space, and I forget, there's a skosh of, no, I think that's it, which gives us a total yield of the 300 lots that staff pointed out, and we came in at 294. That gives another context of, it gives you a good sense of the development footprint, the relationship to phase one. You can see the 105 lots in the general north area, the backbone road, the circulation, again, and how it generally fits the terrain. We worked hard at making this a really good fit to this terrain, and there's the resultant tentative map, and you can see the grading and landscaping all shown in- all shown in this image. It is 85%. You know, I've done a lot of common open space projects and a lot of density transfer-type projects. I don't know that I've ever seen one with 85% common area, but it's, it's not entirely a function of the way you approach the land, and then also the, um, the constraints that we're dealing with. There's the landscape plan. I wanted to show the commission something here, what's involved in the process. Different scales, but bear with me, it's important. If you look at my cursor right here along this road, that's one of the grading areas that we had a lot of challenges with. And you notice how the lots are aligning the road as they typically are to have more efficiency in spreading costs over the road, double-sided road, right? Now you look at this one, and we lost all of those lots here. And it was just one of those areas that was a little bit more challenging, that results in more grading, more rock walls. So we shifted things around, and you can see the yellow on this landscape plan. Of course, there's a lot of trees in the common area, but the yellow part is where you have the revegetation with seed mix and replanting in that area. One of the notable changes and what has evolved in process was staff review and our engineering, and then, like I said, largely an art form to making it work in this business. This map here, I'm purposely showing, you know, there's a lot of different forms of, and there's one, staff included, in the staff report about the different shades of colors that serve purpose in slope analysis. But what's easy to read here and easy to explain, at least for me, because I find slope maps get into so much detail and, and your head can spin. And what I like is the simplicity of saying what we know is a universal standard. And, and I say universal because anytime I've done development, no matter which jurisdiction you're in, the threshold for no development is basically 30%. That's represented in red here. And then there's always some credit for, and there's different slope ranges, right? Zero to 10 or zero to 15 in most areas is kind of, you get 100% development of that area. And then as density, as slope increases, the yield goes down. And, and it's a formula-based or an environmental-based analysis. But the simple truth here is that if you look at our lots conforming to the terrain, you know, there's little ins and outs and splashes and doses of red. But for the most part, and for the large part, what we've done is established a lotting pattern and a development form that completely avoids the 30% slope. That's what we've tried to accomplish here. I, I think it's well done, and I hope the commission recognizes that as evidenced by the staff's support for the variance, which actually leads to a better product with, in terms of containing the development area to the flatter areas and then less, uh, less grading. Talking about overall grading. It's, um, it was clear in the staff presentation that there are significant cuts of certain depths and fills of certain depths. Here is our trail plan. And again, a lot of public benefit here when you have a site like this, you know, and, and we have a lot of constraints. The flip side of constraints is the opportunity that comes with trails. And you can just generally see we have the existing trails that are kind of in that turquoise. And you see them largely to the south. So we just make connection to those, creates a great opportunity. The purplish trail is the 12-footer, that's kind of the most pronounced improved trail between the north start of the, the project. And, and then this phase is this new part of a couple hundred lots, 294 lots, excuse me, connecting the north to the south. And then we have a four-foot wide trail on a sidewalk in green you see there. I mean, obviously, we have to look for opportunities to connect so that we're not carving up, like, if you look at this area where I'm pointing to, you know, we're, we're dealing with some challenging grading over there. So we connect to the road, join the sidewalk, and then look for the next opportunity to bounce out into the existing trail network. That is the idea there. Same with the 10-foot trail here in yellow. And then here, we had that setback between the back of the houses along the west property line. That is the flat land, and it's just another opportunity for connectivity and a little bit wider trail. I think that's all I had in terms of the, the PowerPoint. Let me go to, so a few thoughts on, on the variance. And, and if you, I don't know if there were any commissioners around on, serving on the commission at the time of the prior tentative map. But this is 85% open space, a smaller development footprint compared to the prior one. It's a more efficient layout to the natural environment and a better fit to the terrain. The graded area is 57 acres, and we have 225 acres of open space. So what it means, where's the give, right? It's always about give and take. And what it is, is a smaller lot footprint, a smaller development footprint, and various setbacks to make it work. In terms of the variance discussion, what I'd like to share with the commission, I think, are four key points to, aside from the findings, which I have my own analysis of, just as staff did. But what we are asserting that there is no question it's in, in improved safety. If you look at the prior tentative map that was done on the exact same sand lands. Slope mitigation, this is kind of the biggest thing, in my view, on the, uh, on the variance. The three-to-one slopes over 10 feet in height are being replaced with the combination of slopes plus stacked walls along with terracing that includes landscaping with trees and shrubs. The resultant look of the...
John, you keep blanking out every once in a while.
Like now?
Yeah.
It's airplane, excuse me?
You keep blanking out every once in a while.
Is that Chairman Chesney?
You freeze, and...
Say again. Can you hear me okay?
No, yeah.
Okay, please.
John, John, your entire safety point was without audio. If you could start that again.
That was probably the key point to the variance.
Right.
The entire safety point. It's this terrain, right? Road grades particularly. Can you hear me okay on that, Rob, uh, Robert?
No, I will take the, this presentation for the discussion since your audio is breaking up, and we have coordinated this, if you're okay with that.
Yes, that's fine.
So the four points, Robert Jellu, civil engineer, civil engineer, for the record. The four points that we are, are looking at are increased safety. By going in with a variance and grading a little more streamlined without following the terrain exactly up and down at 10 feet plus minus. We are avoiding steep slopes and sharp curves, horizontal and vertical curves. And in the previous design, there was, the maximum slopes were 10%, which are kind of hard in the winter with snow on the ground, with ice on the ground. Now our maximum slopes on the streets are 6%, which is a lot more conducive to, to safety. Then the slope mitigations, we, we used, per requirement, we used structural containment walls with large terraces that allowed for landscaping and especially for planting trees to break up the monotony of the, of the long straight slopes. Also, we have used bench slopes with, with trees and landscaping as well. To the reduce disturbed area, we had about 33% more area in the previous disturbed area with the previous layout. And so we did a significant reduction by using this, uh, this proposed grading concept rather than the standard grading concept. And then earthwork, we, as was mentioned before, the cut was about 47% more than it is right now. And yes, it's still a big number, but it, it really isn't that big for, for a disturbed area of 57 acres. And it also balances a lot better than the previous iteration of the project. We are, on paper, right now, we are within 30,000 yards of export. And with geotechnical consideration of the terrain, that's actually going to balance eventually. So it's a really good product. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Your time is up. So, do we have any rebuttal from staff to the applicant's presentation? Or vice versa? Hearing none? Do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no...
I, I have a hand raised of Pamela Roberts. Are they given permission?
This is Pam Robertson. I just would wonder if staff could clarify what the conditions are of their approval, because I don't think that was specified clearly enough.
We, we have the conditions, right? So, Chris?
First, first of all, for, for Ms. Roberts, this is your opportunity, and you have three minutes to provide your testimony. It's really not a back and forth. You can ask the planning commission, and, and they, they have the opportunity to ask staff, but it's really not an opportunity for public to ask staff at this time. It's your opportunity to, to speak for three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Uh-huh.
Okay, then I'll make, I'll make a public comment, and hopefully one of the commissioners will follow up on my comment before they make a decision. Again, my name is Pam Roberts, for the record. My concern, I don't live in this neighborhood, but my concern is that, um, that there's a recommendation from the staff that says approval with conditions. And I'm not finding those specific conditions. And I think it would be helpful for this planning commission, before they approve a tentative map, that they, that it's very clear what those conditions are. Because I'm, I'm very much concerned about, you know, the welfare of the people who are going to live in that subdivision and the surrounding area. And that's my comment.
Any further public comment? Okay, being none, I'm gonna bring it back to the commission. Are there any questions of the staff or applicant?
Mr. Chairman Chesney?
Oh, Commissioner Sevillecheck.
Yes, this is for staff. Would you review again, please, the protected plant species?
So the primary protected, it's not so much that it is protected. It is not an endangered species, but it is on the Nevada Sensitive Species Handbook. So it is a sensitive species, and it's buckwheat.
So please review for me again how you plan to protect the buckwheat.
So the primary, the primary way of going about protecting that buckwheat was to move forward with parts of that approval for the variance. If we removed the approval recommendation of the variance, that would basically require them to go into all the buckwheat land that is currently there. Right now, they are impacting a very small amount of the buckwheat. And I believe, I apologize. So our Washoe County Parks Planner provided a condition. It is to be within the Exhibit A of the conditions of approval. And she goes through the revegetation plan, restoring these critical areas, and requires the applicant to reach out to Anna Higgins at the Nevada Division of Forestry. So it's, there's transplantation efforts associated with the areas of buckwheat that will be impacted. And the exact species is the altered andicite buckwheat.
Commissioners Sevillecheck, did that answer your question?
Yes, so what, what evidence do you have that supports transplantation of this species?
So I personally have none. I'm not a botanist. However, our Parks Planner consulted one with NDF, as well as one of our other Parks Planners who does have experience with transplantation. There is success within it. Unfortunately, I don't know enough beyond that to be, to provide anything educational.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff or the applicant?
Yes, I do, because it's one of our major concerns in that area is the traffic report that was done in November of 2019. Wasn't brought up at all, but it says that 7th Ave is listed as a D on one page, and on the other page, it's mentioning everything on Golden Valley's side, and it's all listed at Level F, which we all know is the lowest level that you can go. And yet, there's no immediacy to try and fix anything. It's all in the future. So I know the, these are phases, Phase 2 through 6. What is your timeline with this development? If I could get an answer on that, please.
From staff?
Well, staff, or probably the applicant.
That would be for the applicant? What's your timeline on this project?
Will, can, can Will hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, I can hear you.
Why, why don't you take that since you're, you're gonna control the timing of the land development?
Okay, well, again, I, again, that's kind of a hard question to answer, but, um, but what I can tell you, and I, not to go, sorry, goes off the traffic question...
you, and not to go, sorry, goes off the traffic question, because I think Paul Suleggi's on, so he could probably answer more of the traffic, but what I can tell you is that we had set the original 105 final map lots to D.R. Horton, and they opened up their sales office in January of 2019. Because I'm the president of the HRA, there's only been about 40, less than 50 closings in a year and a half. And part of that was because the cost, what it cost to build those first 105 lots and caused the price of the homes to go up to $450,000. So the idea was to go back and rethink going forward, how we create a project that hits the, quote, "missing middle." But aside from all that, I think the reality is, is that if we're successful in getting approved, you know, realistically, probably at least a year before we get our permits, you know, going through the process and all that to start construction a lot, so you're probably at least 18 months out, just on the first phase. So, you know, again, based on the market and the demand, it's kind of to be determined. So it's hard for me to really answer that, but I would say probably, you could probably look at a build out almost of what, John, maybe the next five years, you know, based on, you know, a product that might hit the mid-300,000 range, 350 some of our, so I would say, you know, you know, three to five years, most likely probably five, because it's a pretty large project in the absorption.
All right, thank you. I just had to put it on note, I'm very concerned about the traffic issues coming over Golden Valley, because they're having problems in that area now, let alone when this starts to go forward.
Sure, I understand. Chris Bronzler, Washoe County Planning. I'd like to add just one thing, hopefully, to assist in answering that question. So within Exhibit 8 of the conditions of approval, NDOT was, Nevada Department of Transportation was a reviewing agency of this proposal, and 8B states that, based upon the number of trips generated by this project affecting NDOT right-of-way, it is requested that the applicant formally submit a traffic study to NDOT for review and approval, and that the traffic impact study shall meet the requirements defined in Appendix A of the NDOT Terms and Conditions related to right-of-way occupancy permits. So NDOT at least is looking at this further.
All right, Chris, thank you.
Any further questions of the applicant or staff? Yes, Commissioner Bruce. I have, I'm, I guess, I'm confused by this. I find this an extremely complex and difficult project to understand, and I find that the variances are far too cumulative. I am having a lot of trouble feeling that this has been properly handled, in the sense that I understand that the COVID-19 is putting a lot of pressure on all of us, but it seems to be being rammed through in terms of the people that are right there, and the Sun Valley CAB, and they're having trouble, too. But I find it hard to accept all of the variances, and I find it hard, I mean, it seems to be that if I had 10 acres, nine of which was vertical, and the other acre, and the 10 acres was zoned seven units an acre, I could put 70 units on one acre, if I got enough variances. And is there any clarity to that, or could this be, could there be better communication with the population?
Can I take that?
You're welcome to take it. Please.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
This is just stunning. Look, and my name's on two panels on the screen. I mean, how do you wrap your head around that? So there is only one variant, right? So just in terms of fact here, there is one variant, and as pointed in the, pointed out in the staff report, the summary of the request, allow finished grades to exceed more than 10 feet in height. That is our variant.
What about the setbacks?
The what?
The setbacks.
Well, the setbacks are a completely different section of code, right? They are the common open space development, that section of code that provides an incentive to cluster and do density transfer, which is common anywhere you go, right? To leave the more constrained portions of the site in their natural state. Thus, we have 85% open space. That's the fact. But, so, and to your question, I think about, you said, raming this through, we have been working on this for over a year now.
I appreciate it.
And, you know, we went to the CAB, and I guess there were some resignations, and then a couple of people didn't show up the day of the CAB. We actually postponed our hearing, which was supposed to be a couple of months ago, and then agreed that it would be the right thing to do to go to the CAB. And then, and somebody on this, in this discussion will know better than me, but hopefully would confirm that we had a poor showing at that night at the CAB, and then there were some recent resignations recently at that time. In terms of the variant, you look at the math, if the old plan that was approved resulted in 568,000 yards of earthwork grading, and we've reduced that to 385,000. So you're talking about almost 200,000 yards less grading as a result of the variance that we've done, which, again, is a combination of looking at slopes and walls and planting the terracing of those walls, and basically daylighting to a catch point sooner than chasing a slope further down the hill, if that makes sense to you. Hard to deal with on a Zoom meeting, but I'm doing my best. That's the general concept.
I appreciate your comments, and yes, it is very hard to deal with on Zoom meetings, and I appreciate that. That's still...
It is, and, you know, we're all doing our part, and I appreciate your comment, Commissioner Bruce. And, you know, this is a, this is a very technical, honestly, and I think you'd agree with me, as would Robert Jalue, this is a, this is a very technical variant, you know? A setback is something different than varying a three-dimensional issue such as grading and cuts and fills, and we're presenting a better solution to the natural terrain is what's really going on.
Thank you.
I hope you can, I hope you can trust that, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Commissioner Doncic.
Yes, I drove up to look at the site the other day, and I noticed that you were cutting into some of the hillside, and you put a floor below the main entrance to accommodate the angle of the slope. Are you planning on doing that more often?
Are you talking about the existing condition that you see up there?
Yes, looking, as you first come into the development, I noticed the houses to utilize the slope have established a floor below the main entrance.
So basically creating a daylight base.
We do not have such a grading condition. We've completely changed the approach to this project. That was done by a, you know, a different team, different engineer, not to say that it isn't right, but I'm confident suggesting that we've got a better solution in the way the homes fit the individual lots and the lots fit the land. And, you know, the fact of the matter that a couple hundred thousand yards less grading should be, should be something that we all see as a benefit to the way we've approached this thing with the grading.
Hey, John, can I, can I just add to the commissioner's comment about that again?
Yeah.
Part of, part of this whole thought process and working with, with Chris and staff and Trevor and Robert and the team here was learning what we learned from what D.R. Horton did with their project, because they were doing this walkout product on the first 105 lots, and the cost of the grading, you know, they were into constructing the lots for over $140,000 a lot, which pushed the home prices to $450,000 plus a lot with this walkout product. We scrapped that, we went back to the drawing board and said, how can we create a project that's more efficient? We don't have, we don't have a split-level lot, we don't have three stories, we have single-story, two-story homes that hit that missing middle, that provide ownership for people that can, that can hit a market that's in that 350. So we've reduced our horizontal costs by almost half of what the 105 lots initially did. So we think we got a more efficient product, and think we got a product that's going to be affordable for the, for the community, for a lot of these younger families moving to Reno, and we hope that, we hope that you feel the same. So thank you for your time.
Any further questions? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Is there any discussion of the commissioners? Being none, I'll call for a motion. Is there a motion to be made? Commissioner Doncic.
I make a motion. I move that after giving reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, Washoe County Planning Commission approved tentative subdivision map number WTM 20-001 for Ladura Ranch, with conditions of approval included as Exhibit A for this matter, having made all 10 findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110.608.25. Nate, do I do the variants at the same time or two separate?
I would recommend just doing them both at the same time. It's part of the same project.
Okay, let me continue reading, please. Regarding variance case number WPV AR 20-0002 Ladura Ranch, I move that after giving reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approved variance case number WPV AR 20-0002 for Ladura Ranch, with conditions of approval included as Exhibit A for this matter, having made all five required findings in accordance with the Washoe County Development Code, Section 110.804.25.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Doncic. Do we have a second?
Larry Payton, first second.
Larry Payton, you second?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm going to call for a vote, and we're going to do a roll call vote on this. So I'm just... Commissioners Savileczek.
Yes, I just caution developers or applicants to not play loose with the term of missing middle. These home prices are still exceedingly expensive, so let's be careful about that.
Can I, can I respond to that, Chairman?
Discussion's over. We're at a motion right now.
Okay, I just wanted to respectfully agree with...
No discussion, we're moving on. So I'm going to call for a roll call vote. We'll start while we have the, Commissioner Doncic.
Approve.
Commissioner Bruce. You're a no?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Savileczek.
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson.
Approve.
Commissioner Payton?
He's muted.
Approve.
Okay. Commissioner Phillips.
Approve.
Okay, the Chair, Chesney, approves. So we got one dissenting vote, and the motion passes.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
Okay.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. And we'll move along to Item B, Development Code Amendment Case WDCA 20-001406 for possible action. And, okay, Secretary Lawrence, please.
For possible action hearing and discussion to initiate an amendment to the Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, within Article 406, Building Placement Standards, to add a new section addressing industrial uses on properties adjacent to residentially-zoned property. New standards shall pertain to any uses within an industrial regulatory zone that is adjacent to residential regulatory zone parcels, with specific requirements concerning setbacks, walls, lighting, and loading, and service areas, and other matters necessarily connected there with and pertaining thereto. Proposed changes include, but are not limited to, an additional 50-foot setback required for any industrial use that is adjacent to residentially-zoned property, eight-foot solid walls requiring, required along the property lines that are adjacent to residentially-zoned property, limits of 25 feet of the height of lighting standards that are more than 100 feet from the shared property line of any residentially-zoned property, and setback requirements for loading and service areas for parcels of one acre or more when adjacent to residentially-zoned properties. If proposed amendment is initiated, public hearing and further possible action to deny or recommend approval of the proposed amendment will occur, and if approved, is recommended to authorize the chair to sign a resolution to that effect. So representing Washoe County in this matter is Staff Planner Julie Olander.
Julie, it's all yours. Julie?
Hello, yes, Julie Olander for Washoe County Planning.
Okay.
Trying to get this all organized. Here we go. All right. My screen is up. You can see the item? Can you see the?
Yeah, we can see, we can see each slide.
All right. So this is both an initiation and a quest, request to amend Washoe County Development Code, to add a new section to the Building Placement Standard 1110.406, and the new standard would be 12, and it'll be regarding industrial parcels adjacent to residential parcels. The purpose of this amendment is to add specific standards addressing setbacks, screening, lighting, and loading and service areas. And this has come about primarily because there's more residential that is being built, either new residential, new residential or new industrial that is adjacent to each other, and there's been some challenges with those different, those differing uses. So these are the, these are the, this is the code that we're proposing. It's not really totally easy to read, but it's in your staff reports also. So the setback, what we're proposing to require is a minimum of 50-foot buffer between the residentially-zoned property, their shared, and the shared property line of the industrial. And that shared line can be where there's a roadway or a structure or parking area, but that, there's a 50-foot buffer there. And then we're asking for screening, and this can be eight foot in height, and it could be a decorative wall, a berm, a solid decorative fencing constructed of either durable materials such as stone, concrete, metal, synthetic or vinyl, or a combination of any of that. or a combination of any of that, that, um, and as long as the height is eight feet in height. And then the two other standards we're proposing is a lighting standard, and currently there is a lighting standard requirement in Article 414 for structures that are, um, within 100 feet, but we're adding, um, a requirement for any lighting structures that are beyond that 100 feet, that they cannot be more than 25 feet. So right now, like I say, within 414, there's a, um, the, the standard is that the structure can't be any higher than 12 feet, and then after that 100 feet, it can't be any more than 25 feet.
Hey Julie, can I stop you for one second, please? It doesn't look like your PowerPoint is, is, um...
Moving forward?
It's not moving forward, right.
Am I there?
Julie, we still see slide two.
I don't know why, I'm advancing, so let's go back to slide two, I'll try it a different way, is that working?
Can you try slideshow and starting it from the beginning again?
Yeah, you need to start slideshow. All right, how about now, what slide are we on there?
Still two, hasn't, yeah, hasn't changed.
And then we'll go to three?
No.
We're still seeing the, the slides vertically down the, the left side of the screen?
If, if you go back, yeah, there you go, it's functioning now.
Okay, I'll go from this then, okay? Um, so I was down to here, I don't know if I should go back, do you need me to go back or would you just?
I, no, I can just move forward from where you are.
Okay. So, um, so then we were on the lighting, um, item where I was saying that, um, currently in 414, there's a standard already for, um, within the hu- the 100 feet from adjacent, that it's adjacent to residential, it, the lighting standard can only be 12 feet, but now we're adding, um, anything beyond that 100 feet, it has to be 25 feet in height. And then for loading and service areas, we're asking that if the parcel is more than one acre, that, um, that any trash areas are, um, are, uh, more than 100 feet from those residentially zoned properties. There was a workshop we had through Zoom on the, um, 9th of July, and it was a good, it was a good turnout, we had quite a few people from the, um, industrial side, people that are involved in developing industrial properties, and we went through the, the standards, they had questions about the type of walls and the heights, and then also the lighting standards, and we did change both of those after that meeting, there was some information given that made it, so we altered the standards. Notice, um, just added that, um, there was a notice published in the Gazette, and then, um, staff was able to, is able to make the, the four findings which are shown in your staff report, and I provide a possible initiation motion and, um, amendment motion. And I'm available for any questions.
And, any questions of Julie? Commissioner Bruce?
Julie?
Yes.
Is there, you talk about an eight-foot screening element. Is there a maximum?
Is there a maximum?
Yes.
So, um, currently in industrial, there is a maximum, and I'm just, um, so, no, at this, in this situation, it has to be at least eight feet in height, so currently that, that would be the height.
A wall, if I can jump in, yes, if it's a wall or a fence...
I'm just sort of a lot, I, I, I forget, I'm forgetting what the requirement is.
The maximum is eight feet in height.
And I don't have...
Okay, so that's stated someplace else?
It is, correct.
Because it talks about at least eight feet, but in one case, and then it says eight feet in another, but that leaves open, what's the maximum?
It's, it is eight feet, that's in Article 406.
That's great, thank you, that's it.
Any other questions?
Thank you Trevor.
Good man Trevor. Okay, um, so, no, no further questions of Julie? Uh, is there any, uh, public comment on this?
We do have Trey Abney, I will give permission to talk.
Okay.
Yeah, hi Commissioners, for the record, Trey Abney with Neop, Northern Nevada, we support, uh, this effort and this item, I want to thank, uh, Julie and Trevor and the team there for being with us in the commercial real estate industry, uh, you know, they, they came up with draft language and we worked through it and, uh, on the screening language, and light pole sizes and heights, et cetera, so we just want to thank, thank staff for their openness and their friendliness and their willingness to work with us, and we support this, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Being none, I'm going to close, uh, uh, close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for, uh, comment and discussion. Seeing none?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Doncheck. Why do you wait till I move when you know you're going to make a comment?
Because I'm going to make a motion.
Come on.
I waited my turn.
Okay. You're going, all right, going straight to the motion, let's do it.
Yes. I move, uh, regarding initiation, I move that after giving reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report and received during the public hearing, Washoe County Planning Commission initiates the amendment to Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, within Article 406 Building Placement Standards, as described in the staff report for WCA 20-0001. I further move for the amendment, I move that after giving reasoning consideration to the information contained in the staff report and received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission recommend approval of, of WDCA 20-0001 to amend Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, within Article 406 Building Placement Standards, as described in the staff report for this matter. I further move to authorize the Chair to sign the resolution containing exhibit A on behalf of the Planning Commission and direct staff to present a report to this commission's, of this commission's recommendation to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners within 60 days of today's date. This recommendation for approval is based on all of the following four findings in accordance with Washoe County Code, Section 110 dot 818 dot 15, section E.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Doncheck, a second by Commissioner Bruce. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Next. Item C, Master Plan Amendment Case WMPA 20-004, LUTE Amendment.
Go ahead and read this, Mr. Chair, um, but before I do, I, I just wanted to give a little bit of a summary for the next four items that are before you. Each of these items are amendments to the elements section of, of the master plan, and they are, um, requirements, uh, in order for Washoe County to comply with the recent 2019, uh, Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. And so each of these amendments were identified as, as required, uh, changes that are needed, and these are, this came from the Truckee Meadows, uh, Regional Planning Agency staff, uh, they did a comprehensive, uh, review, an audit of, of our master plan, and these are some of the short-term amendments that were identified. We are going to be opening up, and as, uh, there's an item on this discussion, uh, tonight, we'll be opening up the master plan for a full-scale, um, you know, real deep dive into the master plan, but these are the immediate, short-term changes that were identified by regional, and, and staff is, uh, is accommodating that request. And so with that, I'll go ahead and get started with item C, which is Master Plan Amendment, case number WMPA 20-00004, which is the, the loot, the land use and transportation element for possible action hearing and discussion to approve updates to the land use and transportation element. A component of the Washoe County Master Plan in order to comply with the, uh, 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, uh, regional conformance request, the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan had last been updated in 2012, but the newest version was approved in 2019. The updates in this agenda item are designed to ensure that the loot and the regional plan do not potentially conflict. State law requires that the county master plans be in conformance with an applicable regional plan. Specific updates include the following, one, include language identifying how Washoe County will be limiting development outside the Truckee Meadows Service Area to 2% of the communal development, the TMSA is a boundary line that generally circles the more densely developed areas of the county such as Reno and Sparks where municipal services such as water systems and sanitary sewer are available or readily available to support development. Two, include language describing the limitation of development outside the TMSA to not allow new divisions of land that would create a parcel less than five acres inside outside of an approved rural development area. Rural development area allows the creation of smaller parcel sizes as long as the overall density remains the same as the project received approval of the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency. Three, include language acknowledging the regional land designations or priority har- and priority hierarchy of, for development. These designations direct growth to tiers within the TMSA as outlined in the 2019 Regional Plan. And finally, four, include language referencing the regional land designation, uh, density requirements, as each designation allows a different level of density in order to direct, uh, growth effectively. So providing a brief presentation representing Washoe County, uh, are Dan Klon and, and Chris Bronzik, uh, I'm assuming Dan, are you going to be presenting for this one?
I am, Dan Klon for the record, um, just smiling because I forgot how long that, that case description was.
Dan, excuse me for a minute, I want to, uh, to ask, uh, our Counsel Nate, are you, uh, are you perfectly satisfied with the noticing of these, uh, these items? And, uh, the, the timeline for the noticing of them?
So the, the question that came up in general public comment is, I think, what you're referencing?
Yes, sir.
About the neighborhood meeting and whether or not, uh, there was individualized noticed properties. And the noticing requirement for the neighborhood meeting is in Chapter 278, it's 278 point 210, and it's also in, uh, Article 820 of the Development Code. And what's kind of interesting is the question of whether, um, each of those applies to a specific project that comes in that requires a master plan amendment, or whether it applies to any changes to the master plan, even if they're sponsored by or initiated by the governmental entity itself. And I, I think I can make a case that, um, it only applies to project-specific, um, items just based on the fact that it references, you know, the area, uh, concerned, which indicates, I think, fairly, a fair read, is that it means, um, a portion within the unincorporated county that it actually applies to, but fortunately, we don't have to answer that question with any more exactitude than that because both the provision in Chapter 278 and the provision in Article 820 that require the neighborhood meeting require the, the quote, person, unquote, um, that is seeking the amendment to hold the neighborhood meeting and, and conduct, you know, the noticing and things like that. If you look in Chapter 278, um, there's no, uh, definition of what a person is for purposes of that statutory section, but the NRS is not without a definition of person. I will say before even looking at the definition that I could, um, state in general terms that governmental entities are typically not regarded as persons under the law. Um, individuals are certainly regarded as persons, and so are business entities like partnerships, corporations, LLCs, LLPs, and those types of things. Those typically, typically are regarded as persons, but governmental entities are not. Um, the Nevada revise statute is broken into about 700 some odd, uh, chapters, and the very, very first chapter in the NRS is called the Zero Chapter, and in Chapter Zero, there's a definition of person, which is meant to be a general definition for the overall NRS. It does not include governmental entities, in fact, it specifically excludes governmental entities from the definition of person. Um, there is a definition of person in the Development Code in Article 9, um, which also does not include governmental entities, it talks about things like firms, associations, corporations, um, and individuals, uh, but again, it does not include governmental entities. So yes, I am satisfied to answer your question that, um, the neighborhood meeting requirement noticing, um, of individual property owners is not, uh, something that is required in this type of scenario for these element, uh, governmental entity-sponsored element amendments, which is what you're looking at tonight, this applies to all four of, do we have four, Trevor, and then the CD, ENF?
Yes.
Yes, so we have four of them tonight, this applies to all four of those. So I, I think that that issue is satisfied and you are able to move forward. I would note also, just from a policy standpoint, um, the, the onerousness of a requirement of noticing every single property owner, or every single APN number, um, in the county for an amendment like this would be overwhelming, you're talking about hundreds of thousands, probably, of parcels, um, that's just a ballpark figure, but you'd have, you'd, you'd have to do noticing and the postage, you know, for, and the delivery for all those, um, parcels, which would be, um, a drastic cost, um, to the governmental entities, and those are taxpayer resources as well. So, um, with, for all those reasons and based on that research, I think that the noticing issue for the neighborhood meeting is satisfied, and I think you're okay to go forward. I wanted to round, I wanted to state all that for the record, so it's in there.
Thank you very much Counsel Edwards, that clears that up. Okay, Dan, I will... Yes, Commissioners of Villach.
Thank you. I spoke with, um, Trevor Lloyd earlier today and asking about the staff recommendation, so I'm seeking clarification if this is initiate and recommend approval as opposed to approve.
Is that directed to me, Commissioner Sevillecheck?
I guess it'd either be counsel or, um...
Yeah, I, I can answer that, Nate Edwards, again, I think I can answer it, um, and if you're not satisfied with my answer, you can, um, see what Dan and Trevor think also, but I, but what I think is, it's, you know, your, your agenda is to initiate and approve, and, and I do think, you know, your action is, whether it's, we call it recommend approval or approve, um, it, it doesn't in the end make a difference because it has to go to the county commission and then to regional as well for conformance review, no matter what we call it, so, um, I think, um, your motion would be to initiate and approve, it functions as, in effect, a recommendation, or at least a provisional improvement that goes up to the county commission, and then if they approve it, to the regional planning authorities.
Thank you.
Okay, Dan, you got the floor, we'll not interrupt you for any longer.
After that introduction, um, Dan Klon for the record, um, WMPA 20-0004 for the Land Use and Transportation Element Amendment. So, just backgrounds, the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, Regional Plan was adopted October of last year, we're updating the land use and transportation element in order to bring it into conformance with the regional plan for NRS 287 point 028. There are four areas of conformance, um, we're required to include language identifying how Washoe County will be limiting development outside of the TMSA to 2% of the cumulative developments, include language describing the limitation of development outside the TMSA to not allow new divisions of land that would create a parcel less than five acres in size. Third, include language acknowledging the regional land designations and priority hierarchy for development, and fourth, include language referencing the regional land designation density requirements. Staff also wanted to take this opportunity to outline some intents. First, we want to bring it into conformance, second, we want to just do some minor cleanup to clarify and simplify the reading of the land use and transportation element, and then third, we want to provide development flexibility. So there are a, 11 proposed changes, um, I've broken down these slides in terms of original language and proposed language, which is included in your staff report, so I'm going to state the policy number, go through the intention of the policy change, and trust that you guys have the ability to read what is on the screen as well as look at your staff report in the name of time. So first is the introduction, we're proposing to change the introduction to recognize the regional land designations and priority hierarchy, and also outline, uh, TMSA inside the TMSA and outside of the TMSA development framework, provided this map here to give a general idea of where the TMSA is. The TMSA is the Truckee Meadows Service Area, and it's represented by the black line on the map. All the areas in yellow or tan are the areas within the TMSA that are in county jurisdiction, and all the areas outside of the TMSA are within county jurisdiction. So, first... So first policy, LUTE 1.1. We are recognizing the regional land designations, and we're also simplifying the reading of this code in order to make that TMSA and outside of the TMSA development framework approach. The key framework that's used to look at the Land Use and Transportation. So what we're doing in the interest of readability is removing the mention of suburban character management areas, rural character management areas, and we're stating that they are explicitly outlined in the area plans here. And I've provided the map of regional land designations to kind of give you an idea of what is going on. There ranges from mixed use, which is within the cities, to Tier One, which we see in Sun Valley, Tier Two, where we have in North Spanish Springs and a unidentifiable part in between Cold and Springs on this map, and then most of the county is Tier Three and the rural area. And we'll touch more on this in Policy 3.1. So LUTE Policy 1.4, we're just recognizing the TMSA as being an area for walking and cycling. 3.1, we're targeting the development based on these regional land designations outlined by this table, which gives us the density requirements as well as the minimum density requirements, and identifies map two of the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, which is this map, Map Two, which we've already covered where all of the various tiers belong to in the county. Moving on to Policy 3.3. The intention of this rewrite was to both identify the minimum lot size requirement for the regional conformance and simplify the implementation of the Land Use and Transportation Element specifically to make sure that when somebody reads code, they don't have to go through two, three documents in order to decide, to understand exactly how many dwellings are per acre. This is in the interest of making it clear for the average reader as well as making it easier to implement. Also mention that regional has no requirement for a five dwelling units per acre within the TMSA anywhere within the regional plan. Now, this policy also gets into the rural development area, which is the exception. This is outlined specifically in Rural Form Policy Seven. It requires a regional map amendment. This is a clustered development, so the overall density still cannot be more than one dwelling unit per five acres. Requires community services and infrastructure, but cannot promote the expansion of the TMSA, and also requires the identification and preservation of open space and be in the public benefit. Goal Seven, we're just making it clear, keeping that TMSA inside the TMSA, outside the TMSA framework, and recognizing that the tiers are referenced in Policy 3.1. Goal Eight, we are just doing some minor housekeeping as there are no general rural residential regulatory zones in the developed code. We're just replacing that with the general rural agricultural as well as strengthening the inside/outside of the TMSA framework. Likewise, in LUTE 8.3, we're just cleaning it up, making it clear, making sure that there's no GRR and instead having the general rural agricultural listed. Land Use and Transportation Policy 15.2. The original intent of this policy has been pushed over to the proposed Land Use Policy 3.3. It's actually been strengthened. Instead of just maintaining the opportunity for rural lifestyles, we're requiring that the minimum lot size be one, or the minimum lot size is five acres. So it's not just that we're maintaining that opportunity, we're requiring that opportunity. And then further, we meet the conformance requirement for the 2% residential growth. This is something that regional is responsible for. It outlined it in their regional policy RF1. I provided their numbers of the forecast for you, and that's just a rough estimate of a 2% change based on the current forecast. And then finally, last policy is 23.7. We're removing the rural character management area, again, to strengthen that inside the TMSA, outside the TMSA, as well as strengthening the developmentally constrained areas in order to protect sensitive environmental resources or productive agricultural ones. Specifically, for those who are not familiar with developmentally constraints areas, these include playa's, wetlands, FEMA flood plains, significant water bodies, natural slopes over 30%, and public plants, which is pretty much everything that's in color on this map except for the Reno Sparks Indian Colony in purple. So we had a neighborhood meeting on July 22. There were a number of concerns brought up. 1.4, asked about requirement to build pedestrian and cycling infrastructure. The phrasing of this policy is should, not shall, so there is no requirement. 3.1, asking about the location and extent of the density within the region, the regional plan. This has been outlined by Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency and through the work of planning commission members, so we're not going to touch that. 15.2, there were concerns over the removal of protections for large lot development. This has actually been strengthened in the revised 3.3 by requiring a minimum lot size of five acres outside of the TMSA. And then you've also just covered how regional determines the 2% cap. There are also some general comments on open space and environmental impacts, which I believe we covered with the development constraints area, as well as the potential impacts on the area plans. I want to be very clear, the area plans are not changing. The rural and suburban character management areas within the area plans are remaining intact. We're not changing any of the maps. This is just changing the text within the Land Use and Transportation. Notice was provided in accordance with NRS 278.2110. I'm not even going to talk about this as Nate gave something that is much more detailed than I could ever provide, but we provided a circular notice within the Reno Gazette Journal 10 days prior to this meeting. Staff is able to make all five of the required findings, therefore recommends approval of the requested amendments. And I have provided a possible motion for you, and I have updated it in regards to the conversation that Commissioner Sivilcek and planning manager Trevor Lloyd had earlier today. And I'm available for any questions if there are any.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Dan? I'll tell you, I had some questions, and I don't, you answered them all. That was a dynamite presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to acknowledge that TMRPA staff should be available on the line. I believe Chris Tolly is available if you have any questions from the regional staff.
So there's no questions of staff? Then I'm going to request or open it up for public comment? Is there any public comment?
Yes, there is.
Yes.
We have two emails here. The first one is from Pam Roberts. My name is Pam Roberts, and I am resident within the Warm Springs area of unincorporated Washoe County. Currently, the minimum size parcel in the rural unincorporated, incorporated areas 40 acres. Reducing the minimum to five acres and even less if clustering is permitted will lead to large numbers of property owners seeking to divide their 40-plus acre parcels into five acre parcels and increasing the density in the rural area and dramatically changing the character of rural areas such as Warm Springs Valley, also known as Palomino Valley. I am not clear how the 2% cap described in LUTE 15.2 will alleviate my concerns, but a public workshop may have helped me understand this component. I also have concerns regarding the language on page 10 of the staff report under findings for availability of facilities. There are and are planned to be adequate transportation, recreation, utility, and other facilities to accommodate the uses and densities permitted by the proposed master plan designation. I underline the words "are planned to be adequate" because this is a very open-ended and will lead to a repeat of the Warm Springs specific plan area debacle that was approved over 25 years ago. When the SPA was approved, the applicant had grand plans of building a community water system, a waste treatment facility, a road systems including flooded control along a spine road, a park, golf course, and more for the eventual 1,700 homes that would be built. None of that happened except landowners within the SPA now have the right to subdivide their land into smaller parcels without any additional facilities being built. Bottom line, the county currently approves specific plan areas and developments outside the TMSA without including a sunset clause, so even if the planned infrastructure is not completed, the requested SPA or development is approved in perpetuity. The master plan should be incorporated, incorporate a sunset clause. In addition, the master plan should clearly state that no clustering of homes will be allowed until adequate infrastructure is completed. Next, we have a comment from Susan Ambrose. This is, "We are happy to see that GRR is officially codified as GRA. Under Goal 15, if rural communities in outlying areas in northern Washoe County are strengthened and protected from incompatible development, then the allowing of the possibility of RDAs is questionable. Let the area plan indicate what happens out here and enforce it. When considering the creation of a new RDA in more remote RAs, a requirement is to determine public benefit by lowering the five acre parcel size minimum that conflicts with our area plan. Areas on wells and septics, the minimum parcel size must meet current regulations by the Washoe County Health Department. The policies need to be updated the same as the antiquated code of Washoe County. Serial parcelling should be eliminated in the SPA. Identification of community services and infrastructure required to serve the RDA and describe initial and ongoing costs of service. For example, paved roads installed and maintained over time, sheriff's office response times, fire response times particularly in canyon areas with one-way ingress and egress, downslopes and upslope erratic winds, and in high wildfire risk areas such as the proposed Marshall Ranch, which currently could be a risk if the north fire advances this way. Five acre minimums in RAs should stand as just that per the Truckee Meadows Regional And that's all I have.
Any other, any further public comment?
Pam Roberts and Susan Ambrose.
Okay, we have Pamela Roberts raising her hand. I'm not saying Pam Roberts, who just read. I mean, folks are limited to the three minutes of public comment. Do you want me to give her permission to speak?
Yeah.
Well, hold on now, because your agenda gives people three minutes of public comment.
Gretchen Miller, not Pam Roberts.
What'd you say, Pam?
It's Gretchen Miller. She's watching the same Zoom as me, and she would like to make public comment.
Oh, another name using the same.
Okay.
My name is Gretchen Miller for the record, and I was not really going to get involved in this, but hearing how this is being presented has just prompted me to say a few words. One is to say there was a public meeting is a complete misrepresentation of what took place because no one was notified of the meeting. So no one could attend if they didn't know it was happening. And number two, the volume of paper that was sent out with this specific meeting here required a lot of work and review to understand what you're looking at. And with so little time to look at it, there is no way that you can sit there and give an informed opinion on what's happening. And I do believe the spirit of the NRS that your attorney has read was that the community had a voice in what you were doing, and I don't care if it says persons, dog, horse, or cat. I think the intent was that the people who are going to suffer the consequences of what you're passing have a voice on what they think about what's going on. And I think this is a perfect example of how cabs should be used. And they weren't used at all. So I think we are not being represented. That's all.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
No further public comment.
Having none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Is there any discussion? Then I will call for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Donche.
Yes. Considering Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA 20-0004, LUTE Amendment. I move that after giving reason and consideration for the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission initiate the proposed amendment and adopt the resolution contained in Exhibit A of this staff report to amend the master plan as set forth in Master Plan Amendment Case WMPA 20-0004. Having made the following six findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110.820.15 in parentheses D, I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed master plan amendment in WMPA 20-0004 as set forth in the staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the planning commission.
Anything else? Is that all? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Donche. Do we have a second? And we have a second by Commissioner Bruce. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passed unanimously. Let's see, we've been at this two hours. I think that we should take about a five or six or seven minute break, so let's reconvene at eight forty. at eight forty.
In this introduction would be to prioritize the hierarchy for the resources and services and infrastructure that were identified in the regional plan. And then number three is to add the information about the utility corridors. Four is to identify the regional water management plan that's not identified in the public service and facility element currently. And then finally was to add the water and wastewater requirements that are in the regional plan to bring it up to conformance with, bring our master plan up to conformance with the regional plan. Notice was put in the Reno Gazette on the 24th, which is 10 days before the public hearing, there was a public workshop held, as you've heard. There were no questions on this element itself. And so, and staff, I am able to, staff was able to make the findings for the master plan amendment, and those are listed in your staff report. And there is a possible, here's a possible motion for the master plan initiation and amendment. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Julie. Are there any questions of Julie? From the commission? Seeing none, I'm gonna open this up for public comment. Is there any public comment?
Yes, I have one public comment. And, let's see here. My name is Pam Roberts, and I reside in the Warm Springs area of unincorporated Washoe County. In the staff report, it appears that the county is considering transporting reclaimed water from wastewater treatment facilities within TMSA to the rural area. Since residents in the RA utilize well water, what impact will the reclaimed water have on the aquifer that we tap into for their, we tap into for their well water? Typically reclaimed water is used on golf courses, parks, and other places in which the surrounding residents have city water. In the county plant, is the county planning to use our rural lands as the dumping grounds for its treated sewage that is not clean enough to dump in the Truckee River, but is apparently clean enough for the rural residents who rely upon a clean aquifer? Perhaps if the county has properly noticed, perhaps if the county had properly noticed the public workshop held on July 22nd, my concerns could have been addressed and alleviated. The staff report by Julie Olander for the Public Service and Facilities Amendment utilizes a different format than the staff report for the land use and transportation amendments. Ms. Olander's report incorporated the entire section from the current, yet to be updated master plan, resulting in a staff report of 118 pages. It is not clear what was deleted or added, but my best guess is the language printed in bold type under policies and action programs, which appears on page 18 of the staff report. I noticed two grammatical typos. PSF dot zero dot one dot three should read must be acknowledged, promoted, and followed by any master plan amendments and for insert the work A, project of regional significance. PSF dot zero dot one dot five should read policies for water and wastewater will be reviewed and will not insert B extended from the TMSA to the RA. That's it.
Any further public comment? Seeing none. I'm gonna close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for any discussion. Is there any discussion? Comment from Commissioner Bruce.
My comment is, is that there's a very nice, I'm looking at the wrong one. My mistake. No?
Run D.
No, I, the problem is, is that there are so many pages that are not numbered.
Yeah.
It's very hard to find anything in here. Just a comment.
Oh, I see what you, yeah.
Well, the, I mean, the.
You can follow that.
It has the master plan, public services and facilities element, and then they have a table of contents, but no, no page numbers on the pages.
Yeah, I see what you're talking about. Julie noted. Any further comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion. Commissioner Doncheck.
I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report, information received during the public hearings, the Washoe County Planning Commission initiate the proposed amendment and adopt the resolution contained at exhibit A of this staff report to amend master plan as set forth in master plan amendment case number WMPA 20 dash 0005. Having made the following five findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code, Section 110 dot 820 dot 15 parentheses D, I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed master plan amendments in WMPA 20 dash 0005 as set forth in this staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair. Will the maker of the motion accept the grammatical changes that were just referenced from Ms. Roger?
I'm sorry?
Will the maker of the motion accept the grammatical typo changes that were identified by the, by the previous public testimony?
The numbering of the pages, yeah.
Yes, I will.
I second it with the correction.
And, and that was, your addition to the motion was.
Was the numbering change.
Correction of the numbering. Okay. Good enough. So we have a motion by Commissioner Doncheck, a second by Commissioner Bruce. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no opposition, it passes unanimously. Moving right along. Item E, master plan amendment case number WMPA 20 dash 0006, the population element.
Okay, for possible action, hearing, and discussion to initiate and approve an amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan Population Element to conform to the adopted 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by including language recognizing the use of the most current adopted Washoe County consensus forecast and removing specific data from the previous Washoe County consensus forecast, and if approved, authorize the chair to sign a resolution to this effect. Representing Washoe County in this case is Senior Planner Roger Pelham.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Roger Pelham with Washoe County Planning. I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. Okay, are you seeing my slide presentation?
Yes.
Wonderful. This is a master plan amendment similar to the two previous ones that you've heard this evening to update the population element. And what I would say is fortunately, this amendment is substantially simpler than the previous two that you've heard this evening. In this particular case, what we're doing is getting rid of specific data within the population element. Are you seeing slide number three that's headed by overview?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful. We're doing this again because it's required by the regional plan. This is really rather simple. We're taking out all the specific data, and we're simply putting in a reference to the consensus forecast, which is a study that's done in conjunction with regional planning and the cities on a regular basis. And instead of taking several pages of that and putting it into the master plan, we can simply refer to that other document, which makes this document, that is to say, the master plan shorter, easier to use, and actually keeps it updated much more easily. Again, the reason for this is because it is required by the regional plan, particularly PG 3 here, and it was identified as one of the sort of quickly achievable goals by regional planning staff as shown here. Are you seeing slide number four?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. And here is really the heart and soul of the change itself. While we are deleting several pages of specific information, the addition here really at the bottom of this first paragraph is that Washoe County recognizes the use of the most current adopted version of the Washoe County consensus forecast for all master plan, planning, and regional planning activities. The most current consensus, the most current consensus for Washoe County is available at tmrpa.org and is incorporated herein by reference. And again, that would be added to the master plan itself in the population element. Again, we've talked about public notice on several occasions this evening. This has been noticed in accordance with County Code and NRS. With that, comments on each one of the required findings are included at pages four and five in your staff report, but staff believes that each of the required findings can be made in the affirmative. With that, staff is refunding approval to the Planning Commission for both initiation and adoption of this change. With that, I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Roger. Does anybody have any questions for Roger? Okay, then I'll open it up to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. Let's see here. Hello, my name is Pam Roberts, and I reside within the Warm Springs area of unincorporated Washoe County. It was much easier to find the proposed amendment language in this staff report, which utilized the traditional format in which the pertinent language is highlighted in blue with strike through markings on language to be deleted and new language is underlined. The staff report also refers the public who will be reading the document to the location that the most current adopted version of the Washoe County consensus forecast can be found. This is very useful, user-friendly. That's it.
Any further public comment? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Do we have any discussion? I would like to just add a comment that the Regional Planning Agency is continually updating their, the population forecast. They've got an excellent program, better than anything we've ever had before, and I just wanted to mention that for clarification of the removal of a lot of data out of our master plan that is outdated and old. I mean, we got state-of-the-art stuff that we can pick up from TMRPA, so anyhow, is there any more discussion, questions, staff? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
Chair Chesney.
Commissioner Savileczek.
Yes. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission initiate the proposed amendment and adopt the resolution contained in exhibit A of the staff report to amend the master plan as set forth in the master plan amendment case number WMPA 20 dash 0005. Having made the following five findings in accordance with Washoe County Code 110 dot A20 dot 15D, I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed master plan amendment in WMPA 20 dash 0005 as set forth in the staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Planning Commission.
Commissioner Savileczek, I'd like to make a correction to your motion. It is WMPA 20 dash 0006 that we're, we have the motion on. It would be 9E on your agenda. I know it's late and it's, and we're tired.
So noted.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second that corrected motion.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. Now we move on to 9F, Washoe County Master Plan Amendment Case WMPA 20 dash 007, housing element.
Okay, for possible action, hearing, and discussion to initiate and approve an amendment to the housing element, a component of the Washoe County Master Plan for the purpose of bringing the housing element into conformance with the 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. The proposed amendments include new language referencing the county's support for the regional strategy of housing affordability, and particularly the roadmap of steps to address affordable housing needs in the community, and if approved, authorize the chair to sign a resolution to this effect. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Senior Planner Eric Young.
The floor is yours, Eric.
Hello, good evening everyone. Eric Young, just like the rest of these master plan amendments this evening, this is also in response to the regional plan short-term conformance. My particular task in this regard is the housing element, and it seems like each one, like Roger mentioned, may be getting a little bit more simple. All the Regional Planning Agency seems to be requiring of us for this particular amendment is to recognize some of the work that's been done relative to housing in the region since we adopted our plan. And that's specifically the adoption of a pretty important document called the Truckee Meadows Regional Strategy for Affordable Housing. In the most old-fashioned way possible, I actually attached it to your staff report instead of just putting in a link for you to go to. So I think you all have it there in your staff report to look at. It's a pretty impressive document, and the first part includes a significant amount of review of the, of the community data and the community profile. And the second part provides what they're calling a, a sort of a framework to achieving housing affordability. So what this regional housing affordability strategy is, is adopted very recently, just last year. It was worked on by a lot of regional partners, the Truckee Meadows Healthy Communities, the Regional Planning Agency, and Enterprise Community Partners. We're only the three lead agencies. They really tried to bring everybody in to help create this document that reflects the community's needs relative to housing. Provides this important community profile, which is very data-driven, that we've all needed. All three jurisdictions have really been craving this data-driven approach, and it provides it. And then, like I said, the second half provides what they're calling the roadmap for housing affordability. Now, let's make sure this is not just about affordable housing, it's about everybody in the community being able to afford to buy house. So we only needed to make a few changes. All the changes are additions. None of these changes are amendments to existing language. All, all three changes that we needed to make are simply inserting language. So I'm gonna go over the three insertions. We added in the very first section of the housing plan, right up front, what's called the housing plan requirements, and this section just goes over what NRS requires of us. And we've added what the Regional Planning Agency also requires of us. So we've added this language here that I'm showing you that is, just says that we're going to incorporate this regional strategy for housing affordability into our housing plans and programs. The second addition that we made, if you can find down on page eight of the attached document of the actual proposed element, is a little section that, that says we're going to address this. It's a section specifically addressed to addressing this new document. And it's just the language that says we're gonna do this. The regional strategy for housing affordability was developed by, and it, and it tells you what I just told you, and it goes through a very quick description and says that we will use it. And that's really all, all the, the Planning Agency is expecting of us. The third one is where perhaps what you might call the meat of it exists. Those first two additions are just to sort of set it up and say we're gonna do it. Number three is what we're actually gonna do. It's a policy and a couple of programs, and this can be found on page 18 of the proposed element, which is attached. And it simply says that Washoe County will implement the regional strategy for housing affordability and utilize the roadmap when it provides development, housing plans, and programs. Then the policy is followed by a couple of programs to, to show that we're gonna move forward, that we're gonna do something to implement the policy. And so these programs that, that we're suggesting are Washoe County will update this element as necessary to ensure the concepts identified in the roadmap for regional housing affordability are implemented. Basically, what this program does is it says, it allows us to take our time and be thoughtful about implementing this strategy. It allows us to get some community input and to think about how we would do it, and then update this element in a more comprehensive way. The next program is simply that. And this is also some, something that TR, the TMRPA is asking for. I don't know if you're aware, you probably remember that you get to see a, an annual report that we do to the Regional Planning Agency every year. They are asking that this annual report include whatever we have done relative to implementing this regional roadmap. And so we're simply saying here that when we submit a, an annual report to the, to the Regional Planning Agency, it will indeed include anything that we've done to implement that roadmap. So those are the only three additions that we need to make. They're not, like I said, amendments to existing language. They're just places throughout the existing element where we can pop in some language that will help implement these, this existing plan. So that's where we are, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on this.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions? Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, I'll open it up for a public comment.
We have a public comment by email. My name is Pam Roberts, and I reside in the, excuse me, Warm Springs area of unincorporated Washoe County. This staff report follows yet a different format from the others. Exhibit A is the portion of the master plan related to the housing element. It appears that the proposed amendment language is underlying on page 19, page 24, and page 34. I am concerned that the inconsistent approach or format in identifying the proposed amendment language is different for the members of the public or the Planning Commission to locate and digest. One of the reasons a neighborhood meeting is required by NRS 278 dot 210 subsection 2 is to provide an opportunity for the applicant in this case, Washoe County, to provide explanation of the proposed amendments. This simply did not happen. And that's the end of public comment.
Any additional public comment? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Chair, may I speak?
Yes. I, I've been listening to this public comment about our staff reports, and I have to say I really appreciate it. I think that all of us are going to get together and, and listen to what this public comment is. I think going forward to the Board of County Commissioners, we will try to develop some staff reports that are more consistent with each other in format and approach. And so I'm not sure if she's listening tonight, but I, I'd like to let the, the person who is commenting on our staff reports know that, that I heard her and that I, I'm listening, and that we will, as we go forward, we'll, we'll work on, on having a more consistent approach in our staff reports. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Hey, thank you, Eric. And that's really important, that there's consistency in, in these staff reports, and there's consistency in the way that these amendments are, are being written. And it just, it make it so much easier for the public to comprehend. Anyhow, any more discussion? Seeing none.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Savileczek.
You're too quick with your. I did speak with Trevor Lloyd earlier today to emphasize my concern that we do, that Washoe County maintain its integrity to engage citizen involvement in this. So he was able to calm my concerns, my initial concerns with this, and as we discussed it further, I'm, I'm okay with this moving forward because as we move forward with the updates to our regional plans and our area, excuse me, our area plans, the public will be engaged.
Thank you. Okay. No more comment? Or is there any further comment? All right. Seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Doncheck.
I make a motion. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission initiate the proposed amendment and adopt the resolution contained in exhibit A of this staff report to amend the master plan as set forth in master plan amendment case number WMPA 20 dash 0007. Having made the following five findings in accordance with Washoe County Code, Section 110 dot 820 dot 15 parentheses D, I further move to certify the resolution and, and proposed master plan amendment in WMPA 20 dash 0007 as set forth in this staff report for the submission to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Planning Commission.
Why, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Well, we have a motion by Commissioner Doncheck and a second by Commissioner Bruce. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
What? Any, did I hear, did I hear a no in there? Anywhere? Maybe polled. Huh? Poll? Okay, all right, all right. Then I'm just, all right, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Commissioner Doncheck.
Aye.
Commissioner Bruce.
Aye.
Commissioner Savileczek.
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
Commissioner Payton.
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
The chair, Chesney. Aye. Unanimous. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close the public hearing and move on to agenda item 10. A, that would be Trevor Lloyd will provide us a status and a timeline for the update to the Washoe County Master Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate that. Well, this is officially, we have begun the project, the project, the master plan update. That means the overhaul of the master plan, which includes six of our elements, 12 of our area plans, as well as a number of associated development code amendments in order to implement the master plan update. We've, we've hired and begun discussions with a very well-qualified consultant group out of Colorado. We're excited about this group. They've done a number of similar updates in mostly the western part of the country in very similar. in mostly the western part of the country, in very similar sized locations, with a lot of the very similar issues and concerns that we have here in Washoe County. We are currently working to create a steering committee that will provide the initial direction and focus. We'll likely be asking for, for at least one planning commissioner to sit on this steering committee and become part of the process. We also have a list of stakeholders, and we'll begin a series of interviews and meetings with the stakeholders and interest groups that will be very actively involved with this as well. We will begin regular updates to the planning commission, so you know where we are in the process. Again, we're gonna, this is going to be a very transparent process. We're going to have a number of workshops, community meetings. The idea is to get as much feedback as possible. I understand that there is some concern that there wasn't a whole lot of discussion with this, you know, the items that we had tonight. And that was, you know, there was a good reason for that. That was very laser-focused, just to come into compliance with the short-term goals that have been provided by regional planning staff. We did that. But now that we're opening up the, the, the master plan and really digging deep into that, it's been a long time since we have had such a comprehensive amendment to our master plan. So anticipate that you will probably all be very involved as we go through the process. Also, leading this will be, from our staff, Eric Young and Kelly Mullen will be leading that charge, although it's going to be one of these all hands, all hands on deck. Every, all of the staff is going to be involved, not just planning staff. We're going to be, we're going to be incorporating the staff from multiple agencies. So it's going to be an interdisciplinary, an inter, you know, many, many agencies should be, will be involved, as well as many, many stakeholder groups. And this planning commission, you're going to be very involved. Don't, you know what, we prepared a draft timeline a while back, but now that, you know, it's a bit of a moving target, we anticipate that this is going to be a fairly lengthy process, as you've seen tonight with just these changes. Now we open it up, it's going to be probably a two-year process is what we anticipate. Breaking it up into phases, likely looking at the elements first, and then probably having a two-part phase with the, the area plans, since there's so many of them. So that's, that's likely our process. And we're looking at like a three-faced approach. So. That's all I have for this moment. As I mentioned, we will be bringing back constant updates, probably as soon as next month, to tell you where, where we are with that. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. And for those that have never participated in an area plan update, it's like giving birth, let me tell you. It is, it is a process, a real process. Anyhow, moving on. Item 11A, for possible action and discussion to elect officers, a chair and a vice chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Savilecak.
I would like to nominate Larry Chesney as chair and Francine John Doncheck as vice chair.
I would be proud to serve again.
I would be most honored to serve again.
Second. We have, we have a motion from Commissioner Savilecak, a second from Commissioner Bruce. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
If you want the position.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any future, item B, any future agenda items?
I'd like to raise a point. It didn't affect tonight, but the fact that the election was supposed to take place in June, July, I'm sorry, in July, and the July meeting was not done, had it properly taken place, and the people, other people been elected, there being different people, then they would not have taken office when they should have. The point being that something needs to be done, and either, and I have no problem with it taking place at 11 in July, but if July is not there, it should be the first item on the agenda in the next meeting, would be my point. And I, therefore, I believe that the commission's rules, et cetera, need to be updated.
That's an excellent point, and I appreciate the comment. I do agree with you. It should have been in July, and if not, it should have been the first item on the agenda.
Like I said, given the election...
Point well taken.
There's no blood, no foul. Are there any? Pardon, are we, we take public comment on this?
Yeah, Chair, I don't think there is public comment. We are on, are we not, are we not on future agenda items?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we are.
Yeah, there's no public comment on the future agenda. There is another general public comment period.
At the end.
At the end, yeah. Okay, good enough. Any requests for information from staff? Out there in the hinterland, is there any commi... Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to directors and legal counsel items. Report on previous planning commission items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have three to report on. On July 21st, the BCC heard the appeal of the WRZA 20-0003, that's for the Reno Christian Fellowship. They actually, they continued the matter to a future date, so they didn't really, they didn't take action. On July 14th, the BCC approved the appeal of the Highland Village tentative subdivision map with the development agreement that came before this planning commission, and you all supported it. And then on June 23rd, the BCC approved the appeal of WRZA, the Regulatory Zone Amendment 20-0004, for lifestyle homes in Cold Springs, if you remember that one as well. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you. All right. Any legal information updates?
No, Mr. Chair, I have nothing for tonight.
Thank you. Item 13, general public comment.
I was going to say, what about the comment?
Hi, this is Pam Roberts to the record. First of all, I really appreciate the comments of Eric Young about the staff working together to refine the staffing reports to present more consistent reports to the BCC. It's always appreciative when people make public comments and there's some kind of a response, whether it's from staff or commissioners, that recognize that what the public has to offer might have some merit. So I appreciate that. I also want to appreciate the comments made by Commissioner Savilecak regarding engaging the public as we move forward, and that she's had a conversation with Trevor Lloyd regarding this. I think it's absolutely critical. That's really the, the crux of many of my comments, and why I was concerned about the notice of the public workshop that some of the staff are relying upon at this, on June 20, July 22nd, which really, almost no one had noticed of. And certainly, if I would have had notice, I would have participated in something like that, and would have had a lot of opportunity for staff to explain some of the things that were discussed on today, today's agenda. I'd also like to recognize Trevor Lloyd and Dan, I can't think of his last name, but he did the root amendments. Both of them have been very responsive to myself and Susan Ambrose, who's the chair of the CAB out here in Warm Springs, as well as a member of the Warm Springs Community Alliance. And while it was kind of late to ask some of the questions, because of the late notice, I felt they were very responsive, and I appreciate that. In response to the update that Mr. Lloyd shared, I hope that he is considering some of the stakeholders, not only the developers, who I'm sure have a huge interest in certain aspects of amending the master plan, but also the members of the community who have an interest in a controlled and managed growth in a way that preserves some of the wonderful areas that we have in Washoe County.
Thank you, Pam. Any further public comment?
I'd just like to make a comment, since I couldn't do it earlier. I just want to put a big thank you out to staff and everything, what they did, what they went through, because I went and read that, the 2019 new regional plan. You had a lot of detail to go through, you had a lot. So I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that staff put into just doing this first portion of what needs to be, to match for us. So thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. No, no question about it.
Chair Chesney.
Commissioners Savilecak.
Yes, I would echo that, because Washoe County had the, the biggest lift to bring their plan into conformance with the regional plan. And three of us, now two of us, because Commissioner Barnes is no longer on the commission, have lived and breathed the regional plan update for the last year and a half. And, you know, we acknowledge that Washoe County was going to have to do a significant amount of work. So I truly appreciate the effort of the staff to jump right in and start this process. And it looks like you're ahead of the deadlines that you had set for yourself. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other comments? Then I'll call for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
You don't need a second.
Oh, okay. Well, if I wouldn't ask for it, you would have said, oh, I want a second.